And Education Committee, it is 9:03 a.m. and we're in City Hall, Room 1010. It appears we have a quorum. Thank you, Councilmember Buscagno and Councilmember O'Farrell for joining me this morning. I would like to call this meeting to order. And I'd like to remind those in the audience, we're hoping to have a much larger crowd, but for those in the audience who want to speak on any of the items today, to fill out a comment card if you haven't already done so. And there will be no general comment because this is a special meeting. And if you fill out a comment card, please submit it to the officer in the front. And at this time, we're gonna go to item number one. I'd like to move to item number one. Mr. CLA, would you please read item number one from the agenda?
Item number one is Los Angeles Department of Aging report relative to a request for approval to release the Evidence-Based Program, or EPB, or BP, Request for Proposal for the Selection of Contractors to Provide EPB Services.
Great. You know, this is a routine item. If none of the members have any problems, I'd like to move it on consent.
So moved.
Okay. So moved. And, well, actually, I apologize. I apologize. Can we take that back? We have an actual comment card on this one. Apologize. Wayne, can you come on up? Two minutes?
Yes. Good. I was looking at the agenda, but I didn't see how much the price of this contract was gonna be. And I didn't see whether or not the contractors had any campaign donations to any of the recent elections. Because there's a lot of outside contracts that come in, and sometimes they're bidding and no bidding. So was this a competitive bid? Were there other bidders? And was this the lowest? Or should we say the highest and best bid? I wasn't really able to look at the agenda and get all the specifics at the time. But one thing they should be doing is determining in the last four years whether or not these RFP candidates have been campaign donors, or control persons, or spouses, yes, or even the occasional secret lover, has been a campaign donor. Because I think there's a lot of this stuff going on where you match the Ethics Commission versus the winning bidders. And you will see a correlation that they're giving campaign donations, and then they just happen to win these contracts. And I think that ethically, I think we should have more transparency about that, so it's more clear. Because then if other people are bidding on these contracts in the future, and they know that people winning the bids are contributing to the campaigns, they could start contributing to the campaigns and paying to play too, and factor that in as a cost. Because legally bribery is allowed, as long as it's called campaign donations, and it's just a cost of business. It's not, the businessman doesn't care about who wins the election. What they care about is if they have to donate to the campaign to get the RFP approved, they'll do it. And I think we should be more open and transparent about how much campaign dollars it takes to win these bids here at City Hall. I think that's very important. Thank you.
Thank you. Would you like to comment on the item? Can you state your name and title?
Yes. Thank you. James Don, Assistant General Manager, Department of Aging. I just wish to clarify that the transmittal report before this committee is simply the request for the authority for us to release a request for proposal for these programs. Once we conduct the RFP per the city's purchasing standards, we will report back with our recommendation as to who to award the contracts to.
Thank you. Any questions, members?
Yeah, gentlemen. So this was initially put together in 2011?
The original program, yes.
Yeah. And has the program ever been enacted?
Oh, yes. Quite successfully.
So this is a continuation of the program?
Yes. Our original RFP was only for four years, so that has expired, and now we're going out for our RFP for the next cycle.
Okay. Very good. Thank you.
Thank you. There are no further questions. Moved by Buscagno, Secretary of State O'Farrell.
Thank you.
And for the record, I'd like to state that Councilmember Felipe Fuentes has joined Moving on. Mr. CLA, could you please read an item number two on the agenda, please?
This item is a presentation by Hazard Young at Atea and Associates relative to the executive search for the next Los Angeles Unified School District Superintendent.
You can come on up. You know, I am very excited today to have a public forum to garner input on the next superintendent. I had the fortunate opportunity, colleagues, to meet with President Steve Zimmer of LAUSD, and we're both excited about the prospect of having a long-term superintendent for LAUSD. And as a product of public schools, I know the firsthand positive impacts that education have on a person's life. I've attended Dayton Heights Elementary, John Burris Jr. High, and Francisco Bravo Medical Magnet, which I believe my fellow colleague and committee member was an alumnus for one year?
One year.
One year.
At the Magnet?
Yes, at the Magnet. Fortunately, we weren't there at the same time, but.
Well, I get it for that.
And, you know, I want future generations of Angelinos to receive the same educational opportunities that my parents worked so hard to give me. And so today, we have the pleasure to discuss the selection process of the next leader of our public schools, and to present to us the executive search for the LAUSD Superintendent. Can you please state your name and title?
Good morning. I am Maria Ott, and I am one of the search consultants with Hazard Young, Atea and Associates, and Councilmember Rue, and members of the committee. It's a pleasure to be able to talk to you this morning and also gain your input and thoughts about the qualities that we should be looking for in our next superintendent for LA Unified. Just to give you a little background about myself, I'm not all that different from the other consultants nationally that work with Hazard Young, Atea and Associates. I am a retired public educator, spent 42 years, a good portion of that was as a leader. I was a superintendent in two different districts in L.A. County. I also was the senior deputy under Roy Romer in LA Unified for five years during the time that he was superintendent. So a good portion of my career was in LA Unified, so I have a unique perspective, having come up through that system, and then also having led two school districts. And so we are very much committed to doing the very best we can to present to the board those candidates who will match a profile that we have been gathering. So back in September, when the firm was selected to assist the LA Unified Board with this process, we developed a calendar, a planning calendar, for the process. The board made it very clear that it was their goal to, by the end of December, have identified a new leader because Mr. Cortinas had indicated his intention to return to retirement at that time. So a calendar was established, and you may have heard from your own council districts that we have been out and meeting with people. We've held about, well, over 100 meetings in every part of the school district. And it's been our intent to get as much of the voice of the public involved in shaping of the profile of who the school board will be looking for. So there is a survey, and then there are these meetings that have been held. The survey is online. It's available through lausd.net. So if you go to that website, the homepage, it's the first thing you see, and it says, "Your Voice Counts." And if the member of the public clicks on that, it will take them immediately into the survey. And we just encourage all of the council members, if you could get that word out into your districts. The survey had been slated to close on Wednesday. However, the school board extended it through midnight on Sunday. So anyone can log in up until that time and give input on their different dimensions related to what a superintendent does. So we will be putting all of the input, and it's gonna be quite voluminous, from all of the public meetings we've had with stakeholder groups, community groups, student groups, together with the results of that survey. And although the survey is mostly bubble in and it's on a rating scale, there's also a section of it that is open-ended. And so we will also be compiling all of the input on the open-ended portion of the public survey that's on the website. So that goes to the board on November the 10th at a public meeting. It's my understanding at this time, it's scheduled for 9:00 a.m. And so the report itself will also be made available to the public. So that's coming up. Following that, we will be doing a very focused recruitment, once the board has made it clear what they want to see, based on their review of the profile and the information that's coming in from all of their stakeholder groups. And then we will be assisting them with very intentional recruiting efforts. As you can imagine, for this position, the second-largest in school district in the nation, and actually the largest with an elected board, that we're going to be looking for someone with a very broad and strong history of success in coming into this district. So that process will go on in November. It's actually, in many ways, started because people are giving us names, and we're doing outreach based on that. The board's goal is that in December, they will have two rounds of interviews. They'll have a round of interviews with those individuals that meet that profile that they determine, and they'll then narrow that down to finalists, and they'll go through the finalist pool. There's quite an extensive background check, as you can imagine, on a position like this. And it is the goal of the board that by the end of December, they would be able to identify that individual. They'll go through the contract negotiations, and, you know, I think they're hopeful that someone would come as soon as is feasible, but likely this individual will be in a current position and will need some transition time. And so when exactly that new superintendent begins is yet to be seen. Just depends on who they settle down on and where that person is at the present time. So that's a little bit about the process. I was hoping this morning that I could engage you, like we have with other stakeholder groups. We've been asking three questions of the groups we've been meeting with, and I would very much value, if that's allowable here, to hear from you as well. I know that you're interested in your constituents' input, but you also are very important to the success of the school district, and so your voices coming in would be very much valued. So the three questions that we have, the first one deals, we ask the public and the constituent groups that we have met with, what is it that you, when you look at LA Unified, that you would say are strengths about the district? What are those strengths? Things that you, in a sense, are proud of, that you would want the new superintendent coming in here knowing, these are things that we want to preserve and build upon? I think there's always a worry with new leadership, that there'll be changes in direction. So we want to really call out those things that constituents and the public feel are strengths of the system that they're proud of. Then we also ask to identify what are the major issues and challenges that you see facing the school district as you look to the future, the next three to five years. So that's the second question. And the third question we ask is, when you think about the superintendent for LA Unified, what do you see as the both personal and professional qualities that that individual should possess? So those are the three questions, and we have collected just a volume of really authentic and clear input from throughout this school district, from one end, north, south, east, and west. We were with agencies yesterday that are partnership agencies down at the district office, so we've been reaching out to everyone that, or the groups that were identified by the school board largely, to interact with. So with that, I'm gonna turn it back to your chairperson, Councilmember Rue, and if, you know, we could ask if there's any input on those three questions, it'd be much appreciated.
Great. Dr. Ott, thank you so much for that concise presentation. You know, I wanted to have, I'm gonna, for those who just came in, if you want to speak on this item, please fill out a comment card. I'll still be accepting them. I want to take public comment first, because I want to have members of the public be able to address some of their concerns. But before I do that, I want to call Councilmember Joe Buscagno to make a few remarks, because I believe he might have to leave early for a press conference.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate you agendizing this important issue as it relates to the future of our school district. As a product of public schools, I too feel that it's important that we select a superintendent that serves kids first, not politics. And we've seen the selections over the last several years, that oftentimes you got politics in the way of kids. And my wife is a school district teacher. My two sisters work for the school district as well. And when I expressed to them and shared with them that I'll, we're hearing this item today in committee, their message and message of their peers who are working in the classrooms is to select someone who understands how to run a classroom first. And I know the school district's gonna be looking at someone who knows how to run and has a business background as well, and operate one of the largest school districts in the country. But, you know, I believe I speak for the teachers when I say, you know, it's with great hopes that the school district selects someone that has extensive experience in the classroom. I commend the school district for taking on this effort and going out to communities across the school district. I know we held one in South Los Angeles in Watts. And the question to you, if you can, can you give us a snapshot of some of the feedback that you're getting? I know you're compiling your report now. Is it exclusive right now, or can you give us any ideas of what folks are asking for?
You know, we are compiling it, so I don't want to preempt it going to the school board on the 10th, but I can say, from the community, we're hearing that they really want to have an authentic way of having voice in things that roll out in the future in the school district. That's something that uniformly is coming across the whole district.
Good enough. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Great. Thank you. And I'd like to have, like I said, thank you, Councilmember Buscagno. I'd like to have public comment first, so we could hear from members of the public. Two minutes?
Yeah. There was an article in The Times, on one of the outreach meetings, there was very few people showed up. But unlike today's meeting, you could see there's an overflow. Well, you can't see it on camera, but we must have at least 100 people here, because there's so much engagement with the public. So the strengths of the LAUSD, well, there are no strengths of the LAUSD. It's one of the failing districts in America. You have pedophile teachers right now, and the district is hiring outside counsel to represent the fact that they believe, the district believes.
Wayne, could you focus on?
It is. This is about the search. Your district is hiring outside counsel to defend itself against sexual allegations of its teachers claiming that women, young women as old as nine years old, could consent to sex with a teacher. This was in the media.
Wayne, I'd like to remind you, you know, back to the search. Search for the superintendent.
This is a search. The superintendent is your budgetary officer of your board. You have to stop with the new superintendent hiring outside counsel to defend pedophile teachers and have a zero-tolerance policy on any sexual conduct between a teacher and a student. This was on KFI, on John and Ken's show from 3:00 to 7:00. There have been attorneys that have talked about this, that are defending these young women. Now, the major issues, three to five years, is the liability of the district, because you have a pedophile problem, and you have a teacher problem, and you need to get the teachers in line. Finally, 74% of the district is Latino. There has never been, in the history of the district, a woman that has been elected as superintendent. Your answer? No. Martinez. You have a right here. She has experience here. She has experience on the board. Put her on for two years.
Thank you. Could I have Mr. Miguel Luna, please?
Thank you. Thank you. Good morning. Miguel Luna, CD 13 resident. So thank you so much for being here and asking for these comments, and thank you for a long public comment before yours. So I'll stick to the three questions. I think that the biggest strength that the school district has are the teachers. You have caring teachers that deserve the support and to support you, Councilmember Buscagno, in advocating for someone that understands the classroom. I think I would agree, I would add to that, that someone that also understands the community needs. We need a superintendent that is able to relate to the community and understand the needs as a good neighbor. By that, I mean, we have such a huge need of open space in our urban communities. And it's very difficult for children to understand that, that there's not enough playing fields, places to recreate, and see that there's this green space that's fenced up. So we need someone that understands the importance of joint use. Very important. And there's other opportunities as well with, you know, the environment is my focus, but that superintendent that has a good sense of sustainability, and how the school district can fit within that. We can capture a lot of stormwater on those properties. There's a lot of property. So I think that if we could have someone that has those qualities on sustainability and that understands the needs of joint use, that would be greatly appreciated. Thank you so much for the opportunity to speak before you.
Thank you, Mr. Luna. Could I have Raul Macias?
Good morning.
Good morning.
Honorable Committee, today the city of Los Angeles confronts one of the most biggest challenges. And it's in your hands to find the person, the right person for superintendent. In our beloved city, in one of the most biggest scholar systems in USA, we need this person, somebody to have the humility and cross to the people. We've never seen this in the past to the people. Now, we have a lot of problems after the school, and we don't have programs after the school. Our youth, students need to use his time after the school, and the support facility can be the solution to use that time in a positive way. You done? My two minutes? Not yet? This is a problem with many broken promises in the past, and now it's time to go forward. The superintendent has to be the person who makes a difference in the future for all in our system, the school system. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Macias. Thank you, Dr. Ott. You know, I'd like to start off the discussion from our committee members. You know, and the three questions you asked, it's especially about the strength of the district and some of the issues that the district faces. Again, like I said earlier, earlier this week, I met with President Zimmer, and we had a great conversation, and we talked about a lot of the challenges, but we both agreed to focus on some of the consensus points. And we had a great discussion about that. And he wanted to focus on things that the LAUSD and City of L.A. could work together on. And the three issues that he discussed were the three same exact issues that we've been talking here with my colleagues at City Hall, not just this committee, but other committees. And the three points were emergency response. How can we use the schools? And, you know, especially in our other committees, we had long discussions about El Nino preparation. And LAUSD is doing the same, and it's about making sure we're linked and linkages. We also talked about co-location of services, which has been another big topic that a lot of my colleagues have been talking in the various other committees. And as the gentleman, Mr. Luna, mentioned, and we just talked about it in Arts, Parks, and Rivers, Mr. O'Farrell, about co-use of school facilities, especially for green space. And that was a high priority for President Zimmer, and he wanted to make sure that we could work together hand in hand, because there are lots of, City of L.A. is park poor, and there are a lot of schools that are fenced up, especially on weekends, and he saw why it can't be opened up. And it's a matter of, I mean, the political will and the leadership is there. It's a matter of now the executor, the superintendent, to work with our folks here at City Hall to make that a reality. And it's been done, and there's agreements with individual schools already. But if we could make it citywide throughout the entire district, that would be a huge positive for our city, and for our children especially. For personal and professional traits, I think community input, engagement, collaboration is especially huge, especially with the parents. Getting them engaged early on and asking them what it is, I mean, it's what you guys are doing already, but we need a superintendent who truly believes in community engagement to ask the parents, to ask teachers, to ask everyone affected on decision-making. I personally would love to see someone with very strong managerial and administrative skills. I mean, obviously, this is the second-largest school district in the nation, and we need someone who has a strong management leadership. And three, as my colleague, Councilman Buscagno, stated, yes, put politics aside and put children's first. Children's and teachers, because teachers are the ones who are teaching the children, and we need to make sure children are our number-one priority, and we give the teachers the resources so they can teach. With that said, I wanted to ask, you talked about the timeline. If you could possibly share your timeline with us, if you send it to my office, I'll make sure I share it with my colleagues. But from going forward, I know you said you have a goal of December. Can you kind of, are you getting, are you soliciting resumes now? I mean, can you give us a little bit more concrete on what the next steps are, when you're gonna start interviewing? I mean, is, I guess you're interviewing in November for a December selection, or?
The application process goes into an online portal. It's quite extensive. And so we have people who've actually have logged in already to start the process, but you can do part of it and then continue until you complete your full application and documentation you press submit. That, every application's gonna be available to the school board, you know, to look at. It's really their determination as to how much of that they want to see. We also will have a role of looking at the individuals against this profile that the school board will settle on after they receive the input on November 10th. So we will do background checks as well.
November 10th?
November 10th is when the school board receives the report that includes the results of the online surveys, as well as all of the community meetings, as well as the meeting today. So that time... So, that time then is, here's what we want and then we begin that process of looking. I mean, well, part of the role that the search firm is, is that we have connections throughout the industry. There are over a hundred and fifty associates across the country and we have quite an extensive network of connections with people. So, there's a good chance that someone would not apply, but would need to be recruited and then, you know, bring them into the process. So, that goes on, you know, all of probably very intensively those weeks after the November tenth meeting with the board, which is a public meeting.
Is there a job description qualification done right now or are you working on that?
We have shared with the board, you know, what is considered to be like the profile of a successful superintendent based on research. So, we have shared that with them, be happy to share it with you if you all would like to see that. So, the, the job description though for LA Unified will be unique because it's going to be based on what is determined needed for the system and you're going to be looking for individuals who are a match to that profile, to that leadership profile. So, the things that will emerge from the input will have to be matched to what the board sees from their fifty thousand foot perspective on the system. And then, once that is finalized, then we go out. There may be individuals who are interested, but when they look at what the district's looking for, will say, you know, I'm not a good match to that. I mean, that's part of what occurs. They may be a great leader in a setting where they're at, but their particular experience and skill set is not a good match to what the, the school board's going to be looking for.
So, when does the actual job description go out and your executive search firm start recruiting? After November tenth or?
It'll go out after November tenth. It'll be in every publication, but I can, I can assure you right now that there is not...
Everybody knows.
Yeah. Everybody knows this is open, okay?
So, it opens tense and when does it close or when?
Till filled. It's, it'll be open until filled and...
But you're hoping it'll be December?
Yes. If the board sets a firm date, then that'll be added to the announcement. I mean, that's going to be determined by the school board, but at the present time, it would typically be until, you know, filled and if the timeline the board set is they want to interview in December. So, that means by the end of November, if you are a viable candidate that is well matched to this position, your paperwork should be in. So, that the board will go through this, you know, two process. The first interview is more of a scripted interview where there's a set of questions that all the different individuals that they interview would be asked. The second round is more open where the board members are going to delve in based on what they see is needed and really, you know, go deeper in terms of looking at this individual. There's probably a process where they may do a site visit for the finalist where they're actually going to go into that individual's community. So, that all takes place in December.
And, and the current superintendent, assuming worst-case scenario, you don't find anyone by December, January, has he, I know he, he already indicated he would like to leave, but is he flexible as well?
I think that Mr. Cortinez wants what's best for the school district, so I think that's an issue that the board will have to be in conversation with him about.
Okay. And your outreach is, I know you said you had about over a hundred meetings. I know and, and has the turnout, the news reported that turnout has been low. What, you know, what different outreach methods have you done and, you know, what, do you know what the turnout, can you tell us the real turnout in response you've gotten so far?
You know, I haven't seen the final tally, but that'll be in the report, how many total. It varied. I was at Eagle Rock High School for a whole day this, earlier this week and in the evening there were probably like around forty-some people who were very diverse representation of the community. There are different groups throughout the day. There have not, not that I have seen have there been meetings where you've had hundreds of people. However, that's not really that unusual for this type of input. People who have come have generally been representing others. So, you might have, let's say, a group of teachers who may be in an elected position and are representing colleagues. Then, we've had parents who have represented different, you know, parts of the community, charters as well as traditional schools. So, it's, in some cases, that has been, you know, they have been spokesperson for others who have, maybe have a challenge. We've had them in the day and at night because we wanted to accommodate people.
I want to give opportunity for my colleagues to ask questions, but I just want to ask two really important questions. You know, what difficulties have you faced in attracting top candidates? Because I know there's been lots of recent articles and some drama. So, what are some of the impediments that you're, you see for potential top talent to come here?
I see fewer impediments. I think to, for someone to be selected by this board to lead LA Unified at this time is a tremendous opportunity for top leaders in this country and I think they will see it that way. We have not yet, because we haven't gone through the part of the board saying, yes, this is the profile that we want you to recruit against. We don't, haven't yet done that as to the extent that will occur going forward. But I think, you know, to be able to have a voice nationally and in California and in Los Angeles in terms of where public education is going is, is going to be attractive to the top leaders. Now, if someone's in a very successful situation and, you know, it is, that's where the recruitment comes in. In my last district, I was working for Roy Romer as the senior deputy and I was very aggressively and intentionally recruited for a position that I was considered to be a perfect match. So, it, I was not looking, nor would I have necessarily applied had that not occurred. So, that's part of the recruitment process and I think we do that really well at Hazard, Young and Atia. So, that's what we will do for the board and then ultimately, it's the board's decision. They have to find that match that they can work with to move this district forward.
Okay. Colleagues, any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thanks for organizing this presentation and thank you, Dr. Ott, very much for giving us this presentation today. If I were on the interview panel for the next superintendent, the very first question I would ask is, in addition to the mission of providing an education for students at LAUSD schools, would you agree that our schools are also community centers for the surrounding neighborhood? That would be the very first question I would ask. And then, I would expand to include questions and ideas and suggestions of the following. Los Angeles Unified School District is the largest property owner in the city of Los Angeles. Lots of real estate, profoundly underutilized land as Los Angeles has become more urbanized in, in the last, you know, few decades with no end in sight in that. So, I would, I would very strongly suggest that the next superintendent have a perspective that our schools are also community centers. I know that every single resident that I have the privilege of representing the thirteenth district are involved in one form or another with their local campuses. Within that, we have, as, as Mr. Luna mentioned, so much opportunity in terms of a more sustainable use of the property. We know that through, in Rich LA, we have community gardens going into a lot of our schools. I would love to see them in every single campus and larger gardens than even are being put in. I'd love to see all of the blacktop removed. In the thirteen years that I've been in public service for my predecessor and now as the council member and through the last round of new school construction, a lot of the bungalows were moved and the blacktop was supposed to be removed afterward and just never was. So, even though we've improved our school facilities, we still haven't addressed that major opportunity of removing some of the asphalt, heat island effect, you name it. It's unhealthful for the kids in so many ways. I also am a product of the public school system, not Los Angeles, but public schools and on weekends, you didn't have to go through a gate or hop a fence because they were just all open and they became the playgrounds for the neighborhood. And I know that, you know, we have to be realistic about this, our schools need to be secure, but there are so many organizations and agencies that could partner with the school district and do in some occasions, but it's been met with very spotty success in terms of the joint use agreements. And I'll give you some real-life struggles that I'm living with right now at two of my schools. One is Washington Irving Middle School where we've had a joint use agreement in place since two thousand and two. Soccer field was built. We're working on getting it replaced. It was a synthetic field, but it's on top of blacktop, so we need to reimagine that whole entire facility and get it built, but we're, we're being met with nothing but obstacles from LAUSD and it's very unfortunate and disappointing. So, I would love to see the next superintendent to be able to step in and exert leadership and not leave it a case-by-case approach to solving problems in the neighborhoods. Another example is the Sander Cisneros Learning Center in Echo Park where, on the staff of my predecessor, I negotiated a community center. It's, it was built out, it's ready to go and again, we're being met with nothing but just, I don't know, obstacles from the legal team and we're ready to occupy the site as a senior center with the Department of Aging. So, Department of Aging and my office has been going back and forth practically since I've been in office now, two years and three months, and we still don't have the center in there. We have the funding for it, separate from the school, we're paying for it, but we're just being met with nothing but obstacles. And this doesn't cast a negative light on the faculty, the principals, the teachers that are there. I think that's the greatest strength, you meant, in terms of the big three. Our school board members don't seem to have enough power either to even help out in, in each situation and I find that, and that's always been the case. So, maybe our school board members who want to help and want to break through the red tape or cut through the red tape, they've never actually been able to. So, I think it's a real issue in terms of how much power do the school board members actually have to affect change, to bring new life into what I call a community center slash school. So, I think that's a real issue and we need to, to work on that. And our Recreation and Parks Department, as Mr. Ru mentioned, I'm Chair of Arts and Parks, we have the whole joint use agreement ordinance in place, but stories from across the city on LAUSD's intransigence in terms of cooperating with actually getting these joint use agreements in place, managed, functioning. I feel that the city, we're, we're ready to do our part and will be more ready than ever in terms of resources because that's what I'm fighting for as Chair, but we absolutely have to have LAUSD to meet us halfway because our neighborhoods, and I, I'm an urban core district, these families, we need the schools after school, on the weekends, et cetera. It's absolutely critical. So, I think I've made that point. The strengths though, yes, the principals, what I think are really good are the principals, the faculty, the parent-teacher associations. I think what the school district does well is they empower innovation at, at that level. Principal, teacher, parent, parent-teacher. So, I think that's a good thing and you want to keep that going because they're really doing good things at, at the schools. Issues and challenges, I think I outlaid a, a big issue and challenge, which I think is the biggest one. And then, personal and professional qualities, I think you need a, a school superintendent that is nimble, flexible, is a good listener, but has some power, has some power to help change the culture that I just described because it is deep and it's been consistent since my time with all of this, since two thousand and two. And that will take some time and I realize that, but I would love for the next superintendent to come aboard, you know, exert good, positive influence that trickles down to the legal team. Every meeting we go to, there are four or five LAUSD attorneys. So, I, I understand the concern for, you know, legal issues, but it's a little heavy-handed and it actually gets in the way of helping families in our neighborhoods. So, it's not all bad, but we have some challenges and I'd love to see them addressed with the next superintendent. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. O'Farrell. Fuentes?
Thank you, Chairman. Thank you for being here, Dr. Ott. I, I couldn't agree more with my colleague, Mr. O'Farrell. So, I, it's, it's as if we read from the same script here. So, let me see if I can sort of shorten what it is that I want to say about joint use, but you asked, what is the biggest asset that the school district has? And I couldn't agree more with what's been said already. It's its faculty, it's the facilities people, it's the management, it is the parents. I mean, the, the people potential that the school district is really awesome in every sense of the word with a daily census of over eight hundred thousand people, the size of the city of San Francisco, a service territory larger than that of Los Angeles City and a budget that I guess these days is about six billion, maybe even seven billion dollars. It really is awesome in every sense of the word and I think that is its biggest strength. But I think it's also the place for the biggest opportunity and you heard from Mr. Luna and very specifically from Councilmember O'Farrell, the situation that we find ourselves trying to make the best use of this public asset that is very much the first and probably the most noticeable interface that residents have with government and it's the schools. And so, whether it's stormwater capture, whether it's having additional programming when we're not in session, a school session, I'm absolutely for it, but I also want to sort of underscore the need to have a better relationship with the city of Los Angeles. The school district's been very successful as it relates to the modernization and the building of new facilities, but they've done that largely on the cheap. They, they haven't done it with off-site improvements in mind and for better or for worse, the city of Los Angeles largely foots the bill for all of the improvements that any other development that takes place in the city of Los Angeles, we would insist that the developer does. And so, going forward, I think that there's a way for us to share the responsibility to some of the infrastructure within proximity of the school district. And it's not to say that I don't want to shift the cost burden to you all, but it is to say that if there's a way for us to use our joint ability and resources to solve solutions to, to the pathways to children, to make them safer routes to school, we ought to try to do that in a, in a more constructive fashion. But to the point that Mr. O'Farrell made a little while ago about power and the school board, it really speaks to the need for us to really reexamine the governance of the school district. And I know that it's an interesting creature. It's a creature of, born by the charter of the city of Los Angeles and we had a conversation, I want to say it's been about ten years now, about what it is that it means to govern the school district. And we gave the school districts, as a matter of the vote of the people and a charter change, we gave them the ability to have its governors, its school board, decide whether they want to be part-time or full-time. But we're not properly compensating those folks who want to be a full-time representative and we certainly aren't doing it for those who elect to be part-time. And so, I think it really begs the question of, do we want an oversight civilian commission, which I think largely, with all due respect to the school board, that's the capacity that they play today? Or do we want governors that will actually get involved in the day-to-day policymaking for the district? By and large, their charge has been the budget, the high-profile issues facing the, the school district and oversight over some of the facilities issues. It hasn't really been with an eye, I think, as, as it could be on the policy that's, that's the, that's shaping the, the young minds and, and bodies of this district. So, so governance, I think, is something that would be very interesting, very difficult for somebody walking into a, a school district to suggest that we begin talking about it, but I, I don't know how it is that we get off of the cycle that we're in in wanting to have a more engaged governance structure. Now, I appreciate the move to the smaller sub-districts with this local superintendent. I think that was a great improvement, but to Mr. O'Farrell's point, we really need folks who've got the authority to be able to move this gargantuan entity and, and I don't think that we have that until we relook at governance. You asked sort of about the attributes that we want in a new superintendent and I'm going to politely disagree with my colleagues. I want somebody that's highly political, somebody who understands that momentum is gained in increments and it's not a zero-sum game. I think what the school district has... I think what the school district has suffered from a political lens in is that it's all or nothing. It's either management or labor's perspective, and I don't think that's what it is that we need. We need somebody who understands that the art of politics is the art of what is accomplishable versus the absolute. And I think one recent example that should not go away is the notion that we need to do a better job in helping our facilities and our instructors to be able to learn from the double-loop learning model, and that's teacher evaluations. And whether it is that we get asked again by the federal government, like we did in 2009 with Arnie Duncan, on making sure that the state of California had a rubric for teacher evaluations, or whether it's the need for us to assess and help remediate issues at the local level, we're going to have to have a better model in place that actually honors the ability to remediate, address, and help the profession versus papering a file. And I think that's largely the fight that we have between labor and management on the issue. And so, I think that I would not wait for the state legislature, I would not wait for the Vigaric case or similar cases. I would make it a point to every single day, if I were superintendent, to chip away at that issue so that we can come up with a district-specific policy that honors the profession, that helps teachers learn and remediate issues, because, let's face it, in any career, there is a little staleness that happens, and then there's a vitality that's regained, and there's always an opportunity to learn, to do a better job. And I don't think that we embrace that opportunity for development of the profession because we're stuck in this conversation of either-or. And I think that, to me, is the one significant thing that would leave this district at a tremendous advantage if the next superintendent, if she were able to accomplish that. And so, I'm excited about the opportunity, but I also think that that opportunity doesn't have to be afar and away from Los Angeles. I think you probably, you certainly have the talent here locally, and it's a real opportunity, but I would ask that you all, in a very sort of fair way, weight the conversation leaning towards people who actually have the homegrown recognition and needs of the district in mind, because its positive attributes, I think, are numerous, and I think there's a lot going for this district, but there's also a tremendous amount of opportunity. So, the best of luck to you on the search.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fuentes, and thank you, Dr. Ott. And, you know, I think to sum it all up for my colleagues, I think it's resounding, you know, joint use of facilities, open space, community centers, senior centers. I mean, and this is actually, the political leadership of LAUSD has also indicated the same. President Zimmer, that was one of his top priorities as well when I did sit down with him. And the minute the new superintendent, not only should it be the first question or one of the requirements, but once the superintendent gets selected, I mean, I'll probably speak with my colleague here, we could probably do a joint committee just to meet with the superintendent and talk with Arts, Parks and Rivers to talk about further moving along this joint use agreement.
Great idea.
Yeah, so, and, you know, if you could give us the job description or actually, it's not the profiles that you shared with the LAUSD school board members, that would be great, as well as a timeline, a little bit more definitive timeline, just so we know and in case we get questions. And lausd.net, right? Lausd.net.
Right.
I encourage my colleagues, we had a conversation offline before this meeting, and it's unfortunate, you probably only have about 8,000, right, responses so far. Hopefully more.
Yeah, hopefully more. I, you know, the extension till Sunday, I mean--
Yes.
If you all can help us as well. The schools have been putting the information out throughout the community, and it's on multiple sites, but it's just really easy to access that survey. So, if you go, it's like the first thing that pops up, your voice counts.
So, we will definitely make an announcement at City Council today. I will, in my office, blast it out to my listservs for Council District Four. Last time we did a survey, we had about 1,200 responses, so hopefully we could at least augment your survey from our district at least by 1,200. I'll encourage my colleagues to do so on this committee as well as the rest of the City Council.
That's great.
But thank you so much for coming here today, and with no other business before us, the meeting is adjourned. Thank you to the departments and concerned citizens who joined us here today. Thank you very much.